Hi, we're here now on a special meeting. Today is Monday, May the eleventh, and the time is ten thirty-four AM. Meeting is now called to order, and item number two on the agenda, Esther Scarborough, floodplain administrator, workshop to discuss new permit fee schedule. Good morning, Esther.
Good morning. Is everyone staying?
Is everyone staying? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I thought this was like a workshop.
It is.
Okay, does it have any information for the committee members?
Oh, just.
Different than what you gave me?
Uh, you already have a packet. Okay, do you want this, Judge?
I've got a packet, so I'll hand this one to Commissioner Kirk.
Yeah, we just shared.
There's, there might be a few little things in there that are different, uh, because we got some more information from another county since when that, before that email, after that email was sent out. Okay, um, on your fee schedule committee meeting page, it says May eleventh. I've listed out, uh, what, what our fees are now and, uh, what we might consider to go to. November the ninth, two thou- I'm sorry, November two thousand nine is the first time we started permitting floodzone and construction in, anywhere in the county. And just to give a little bit of history, we tried to just do the floodzones and, uh, it didn't work because people would say, my grandpa's lived here a hundred years and it's never flooded, so they wouldn't come in to get permits. Well, FEMA came back and said, well, y'all need to really permit the entire county. That way you can catch the floodzones and the rest of the counties, and that's what all the other counties are doing also. So, we've been doing that since November of two thousand nine and the, uh, the fee schedule, like if you look under, um, manufactured home placement permit fees on the second item on that first page, it'll say increase from seventy-five to a hundred. The seventy-five is what we set at that time in two thousand nine. So, I've just put those figures on there. You can discuss them and decide if you want to do less or more. It's just a, uh, like I said, a workshop to figure out how we want to handle this. And on the first item, development permit fees, you'll see a page that has, um, if you printed it off on a non-color printer, it's not going to have the yellow lines on it, but on the packet that I gave you, it'll have the yellow lines. And that shows, um, like the fees that we're doing now, like on, like on the yellow, you see where, and it shows different counties. Harden County, Liberty County, Orange County, and Jefferson County. And you can see where, under the Harden County, each one that I did is yellow, is where we match up in the progression, where our fees run the same as we go through there. I just put that on there just for a little, so you can see how ever so often we all match up on the same prices. I guess we can start with the development permit fees. If you pull that spreadsheet up and look, like right now, for a thousand square feet, we charge fifty dollars for the first thousand and then twenty-five cents thereafter. And, uh, what my proposed is, is that we do twenty cents on everything. So, that would be two hundred dollars on the thousand, uh, at twenty cents a square foot. And then we just, it just progresses on down. Liberty County charges a hundred dollars plus fifteen cents per square foot. So, you can see their progression. Orange and Jefferson County charge the same as what we're charging now. Does anyone have any comments on that?
I just want to make sure I'm right on this. So, we would be charging a two hundred dollar fee and as compared to Liberty County, they charge three hundred and fifty for the same permit?
Two fifty for the first fifty, uh, for the first thousand square foot. They charge two fifty. Because there's a hundred plus fifteen cents a square foot.
Okay.
But now, Orange and Jefferson County just charge a flat fee and don't get into, uh...
Right, on the first, we're under what we have adopted there, Orange Counties. So, that, right now, we're all the same, but they're in the process of revamping theirs also, so, um, I've just put this out here. We don't have to go with this.
So, explain to me what a development fee is?
Development is a new construction of homes. And later on, we're going to talk about some other things, uh, that, uh, the judge and I had discussed earlier. If someone comes in and wants to build a house anywhere in Harden County, they have to get a development permit. And so, that's, that's what that development fee is, is any new construction in the county. It doesn't include manufactured homes or, um, and we don't, we don't, uh, permit travel trailers.
And what is this fee? What, what does this fee do? What's the purpose of this fee?
To track basically the floodzones, but all the counties are, because we don't get any money from FEMA to fund this office, but they require us to monitor the floodzones. And like I said, when we tried to do just the floodzones, you can't do it, and besides, we have areas in Harden County that flood that aren't in floodzones. So, we, that gives us, it makes us able to contact those people and say, look, you're, this is not a FEMA flood zone, but it's, uh, water gets two feet deep here. You know, you really need to be careful about building here. Um, I think you have a gentleman right now that is building an area that floods. And so, that gave us the opportunity to show him pictures, because I go out when it floods and take pictures of everywhere, not just the floodzones. And that way, when people come in and want to build in that area, we can provide that service to them to let them know what's happening in their area, so they can build accordingly. Because if it's not in a flood zone, we can't require them to build up, but we can provide information for them to build to a safe height.
I think that guy has a true understanding of how it floods there.
I've shown him the pictures.
Several times, he's seen pictures. He said he's going to take care of that, but what he don't understand is, he's building his residence up, but those culverts that I'm putting in for him are going to wash out with that first, because we've, we've seen that ditch way overfilled.
Your foreman and I have both gone out and talked with him. Even the neighbors are calling concerned about that. And so, we've, we've gone out to visit with him and, uh, showing him the pictures, videos.
I mean, we're doing what we can do to make him understand, and I think he does understand, but it hadn't hit him yet, so...
I, I would caution us on adjusting the fees too drastically. The appraisals are up and, uh, the tax rate increase we did. I think we just have to be real careful that, uh, all of this is not hitting the residents at one time. When you look at going from a fifty dollar fee to a two hundred dollar fee, that's, that's four times. And, uh, with the, uh, with the mindset of the economy and what people really feel like they're going through, I, I think that, uh, we just should be real careful and consider exactly how much we raise our fees.
If that's, we can do whatever y'all decide. That's, we're just...
Just wanted to show you, at twenty cents a square foot, we end up charging...
I guess my question would be, uh...
As you get into a bigger...
Well, actually, two. One, what does it cost us, or what do we, what do we figure it costs us to handle this, this, uh...
Well, once they come in and apply...
Or many.
And it, well, it's just a lot of legwork before then, like this, it costs you guys my travel allowance. And like I said, when it, when it floods, I go out and take pictures of everything and then, you know, save those pictures for when people come in. You know, someone might not come in on that area, but I, I have pictures ready. And I can either email them to them if they're looking at a piece of property. We try not, if they're looking at buying a piece of property, I don't want to do anything that would cost a person a sale, but I want to prepare. I feel my job and Amanda's job is to prepare the person buying to know what's in that area, you know, uh, because they're not going to get that information pretty much anywhere else. And so, we, I feel like that's our obligation to our citizens, that we give them all the information they need to protect their homes and to, you know, to build up. And like you said, you can't make them do it, but, uh, we, we handle that. We process that paperwork for them. We, uh, usually, well, all the time, we enter their energy or Sam Houston electric permits. And we've been doing that for years under that first fee. So, it's, it's up to you.
Are we, uh, we're proposing twenty? What is it currently?
It's, well, it's, it's, uh, just like Orange Counties over here, it's, it's a flat fee of fifty for the first thousand, and then it's twenty-five cents thereafter. And if you look down here on the, uh, where I put that first yellow line in, it brings us in line with Liberty County, and we're a hundred dollars higher on, uh, with, than Orange County on that. Then when you get down to three thousand, we're the same as Liberty County and Orange County and Jefferson County. And most of our houses are three thousand and under. Now, sometimes we have some that are over three thousand square feet, and when you get to four thousand square feet, we're all, with, with the exception of Liberty County, at the same price.
Let me ask you this, Esther, like, for instance, the electrical permit fee. You've got an individual that's already has a, an established residence that might be doing upgrades or building, outbuilding, or whatever case might be, and they come in and pull a, uh, electrical permit fee. Do we have an inspector that's inspecting what they're doing to make sure they're going by code?
No, sir, because Harden County has not adopted any codes, and that's something we're going to discuss later on, uh, under that, um... Let's see, I've got it listed on here somewhere if I can read it. Just on your third page. On, on the third page, almost down to second item from the bottom, is adopting the House Bill twenty-eight thirty-three, which I gave everyone a copy of, that, uh, says that the counties can adopt this and require that they bring in a third-party inspection. Orange County, uh, doesn't do their inspections either. They, the people have to bring them a third-party inspection, which, uh, they did to protect them from people being able to build. You can build a house in Harden County, and unless your mortgage company wants you to have it inspected, you don't have to have it inspected. In my opinion, that's dangerous, so...
Well, I, I would tend to agree, but on the other hand also, go down to the subdivision. I mean, we have subdivision rules and regulations, and currently, how we have it set up is, uh, Fitz and Shipman?
Fitz and Shipman only does the streets and drainage, not the houses.
Let's get to the, to the streets and drainages. They come in and look at it and tell us, yes, it's up...
Right.
To par for the county to accept the responsibility. But in order to get there on the residence itself or on the electrical permits, eventually, we're going to have to have an inspector.
Uh, not, not anytime soon, because we're not a coastal county. But, um, like this House Bill twenty-eight thirty-three, if y'all read that, it, it, um, gives the counties authority to go in and, and adopt that, where we can require the builder or the homeowner to bring those inspections. What Orange County does is they withhold, they'll give them temporary power, but until those three inspections come in, they don't issue permanent power to the house.
And just tell us who, who does those third-party inspections?
They, they'll have to hire someone. Some of the city inspectors, like, um, Freddie Cahanon with Lumberton, I think he goes out and does some. And I know the city inspector with Sealsby used to do it, but there's many, they, they've, we have people coming all the time, want to leave us business cards that they'll do with third-party inspections.
I haven't had overwhelming, a lot of, of, uh, input on this from the, uh, the citizens of Harden County. But the little bit that I have had is, we're taking people's money for permit fees, but we don't have inspectors to go out and inspect are they doing it right? And whether that's a big deal or not, I don't know, but that's some of the concerns that I've heard so far.
But it will be a big deal when you pass this.
Let me ask you this, what, uh...
When the leg, excuse me, Chris, when, when the legislature passed this bill, the first year was mandatory, right?
Right, up until two thousand nine, it was mandatory.
It was mandatory. Counties didn't have any choice. Counties had to do it.
Right.
It was costing these people adding about nine, ten thousand dollars inspection fees to their house. There was a big outcry, and the legislature quickly backed off after the next session and made it voluntary with the counties. And when we imposed that and everybody building a new home finds out it's costing them ten thousand dollars, they'll be up here, just like they were with the legislature.
Most of the people that are getting mortgages, they have to have them anyhow. We just don't collect them. Now, I, I offer to people...
No, we don't collect them anytime. We don't collect these fees. The consulting companies...
No, I'm talking about the, the, um, inspection reports.
Oh, I'm talking about this right here.
Right, they, no, they do that. The, the person that does the, uh, we don't, we don't get anything off of that. In fact, it's, it's, if you read on, read on the bottom of that, the counties cannot charge for those inspections.
We don't get any money off of it.
Right.
But we're going to get all the feedback off of it.
Oh, sure.
The pushback off of it.
Right.
Because I was sitting on court when we, when it was in the first time, and quickly, the court said, we don't want to get into that again. I mean, we don't, once the state said it's not mandatory, we dropped it quickly.
Right.
Now, I know the people that are, uh, in the business doing these inspections, they were up here telling the benefit of them and all that stuff there. But the taxpayers, the people building, they, they didn't buy that.
Well, Orange County does it, and, uh, like I said, that's, they, they said it really made it easy for them, because they made sure that all the houses that were being built were built properly. And, um, that, and then they, what they do is they bring the reports to them. But now, people do it, and they just have to furnish it to the, uh, mortgage companies. And mortgage companies will call us and want to know if we have the inspection reports, and we don't have them, so... Now, if people are building and they want to offer us to put it in their file and keep it, so there'll always be a copy of it, I do that.
It probably has, well, certainly has some benefit, because you're now building by code. But you can expect as soon as it goes in to get some pushback on it.
Sure.
Got a question. Who would represent the county to verify it was done correctly? In other words, if we, we accept these reports...
Well, then, it would have to be a certified inspector, it's just like having an elevation certificate done. It has to be, you know, the county has no obligation to it as it being, uh...
If we have an obligation for it to be turned in, we have an obligation to know that that guy done it right.
Well, yes, they have to put their seal on it.
State, state, uh, governs that. They have to be certified inspectors registered with the state.
All right, and then, second question is, or first responders asking for these electrical permit fees. In other words, is there an increase in fire, increase in electrical fires? Is that driving the, the need to increase the fees?
I wouldn't get that. I wouldn't get that information. Uh, if there is a fire, they come in, they get an electrical permit, because the energy won't turn it back on without that permit.
So, but, but what I'm trying to understand is, is, is there a problem with poor electrical systems being put in homes that we are aware of due to reports or whatever we're getting back from the fire chiefs or fire inspectors?
Well, they don't report any of that back to me. But, you know, what I'm saying is that this is for y'all to consider or for the committee to consider on that, uh, consider on that, to see if, you know, if that's something that we want to do.
Well, I would be cautious to say that someone doesn't know what they're doing when we have no factual information to say we want someone to inspect your work, because one of the benefits of moving to Harden County is, it's just a little less government than Jefferson and Orange County. And that's one of the benefits of people moving into the rural areas of Harden County. And I certainly understand the fees and increase in fees and all that. I just think we have to be careful.
Let me make it clear, we're not here that we have to increase the fees. We haven't done it since two thousand nine, and so, it's time to, just like our floodplain, uh, ordinance, we have to redo that occasionally, to, you know, re-adopt it occasionally. So, this is just thrown out there, and if, if you want to leave it just like it is, we can leave it like it is. If you want to change it, we can change it, you know, it's...
We, at one time, were only permitting, uh, or issuing permits for floodzones. And now, it's the whole county.
The entire county since two thousand nine.
And, and I, I definitely understand what Mr. Pelk said, and I, and I agree. If, if we're going to, uh, permit the whole county, issue permits for the whole county, and we're going to have to have, uh, code regulations. And I don't think the county needs to get into that personally, but...
You don't have to have codes to issue, uh, for the whole county. Uh, we, like I said, we've been permitting the entire county.
That's the purpose of issuing a permit.
To regulate the floodzones in the areas that flood.
So, they have rules and regulations they go by, is the reason why they're wanting us to issue these permits.
It was ineffective, because people that lived in floodzones didn't know until they came in and looked at the maps.
So, the people that don't live in the floodzones coming in from, to the county and getting a permit, they're just, all they're doing is just getting a permit. There won't be any inspections or...
Not from us. They come from, for the mortgage companies. They have to hire their own inspectors. And the builders, they're building, say like, uh, in your area, they all do the inspections. They have inspectors come in. They do, they do get the inspections already. It's just we don't collect a copy of them.
Esther, I, uh, do we have any feel for how much it costs on these development fees? Uh, I mean, in my thinking, fifty dollars for a hundred, for a thousand square foot home, does the cost of us to go out and do that inspection, does it change with the footage?
Uh, it just depends on where it is and how, how, if they don't come and get the permit, how much time we have to spend to get them to get the permit.
I guess what I'm asking is, if they don't get a permit, do we have to spend more time on a thousand, on a five thousand foot home than we do on a thousand foot home?
They're about the same. It's, you're required several trips out, uh, uh, letters, uh, certified letters. We send a letter first if, if, you know, if, if they don't come in and get one, we send a letter. And then, if they don't respond to that, we send a certified letter out.
What I, what I'm getting at is, uh, probably on a thousand square foot, foot home, fifty dollars is probably too, too low to cover our cost.
Oh, I would think so, yeah, fifty is.
So, I can see that that...
Because usually, the people with those homes, the fifty-dollar homes, they're moving in, uh, portable buildings that they're converting to houses. And, and you've got some in your area that they all, they, they came in as storage buildings in a flood zone, now they've converted them to living home, living areas. So, that creates another problem, because then they have to be raised up and installed to the floodplain specifications.
Getting down to where us as, uh, road commissioners does have a little bit of authority on the cover fees and installation fees. Somebody had brought up the idea of charging, uh, for the first, uh, cover fee at, uh, what we charged for the second one, which I kind of disagreed with. I think, uh, some of that information was coming out of Lumberton, where they charge like seven hundred dollars for the first, uh, cover. Well, their people don't pay a property tax, uh, and our county residents do pay a property tax. So, I think that's something that we can provide to, uh, our citizens. I don't have a problem with the increase on the first one from thirty to fifty, but as far as, uh, having it higher on the first one, I think what, what we're doing there is the right thing. Now, uh, us providing, uh, manpower and, uh, and material as well, you know, that's something else. I don't know what the commissioners feel about that, but...
Well, on the, uh, the thirty-dollar fee, that's just a permit fee, right?
That's the permit fee, right.
Right, and they provide the cover, and we provide the manpower and the, uh, material and stuff.
Now, uh, did y'all calculate out, uh, before the meeting, what it actually cost you to, to install that cover for them?
It's about four hundred dollars.
About four hundred?
About four hundred dollars when we go with, with the dirt, rock, and manpower.
Depending on what you, the material.
Yeah, depending on the materials and how wide it is, that's correct.
On average, you say on average, about four hundred, about four hundred.
Yeah, some ditches are deeper than others and take more material and wider at the, wider at the, um, road there, so use more.
So, right now, we're charging two fifty for that manpower, materials, and equipment. So, what, where would you feel comfortable on that? And also, consider too, when they go, if they have a twenty-foot cover and they want to add ten to it, is that, are y'all going to consider that, uh, the same as, as adding a new cover? Because you still have to take the same manpower out there and do the work, so we need a clarification on that also.
I wouldn't, but I'd like to see a provision too for the disabled.
That comes up, well, we have it up, further down in the back.
I'd like to see us, you know, if you have someone, uh, whether they're military or just through social security, a hundred percent disabled, I'd like to see us weigh that fee.
That's fine.
Once they produce the documents.
We, we already, we, she's gone, uh, we talked to Shirley about what they do on the taxes and that, on the hundred percent disabled vets, you know, they don't pay taxes. So, we did not require them. If they can bring me in the paperwork showing that they're a hundred percent disabled, then we don't require them to pay. But we were just doing it not with the authority of the court, but just doing it, making that decision because of what Shirley and them were doing in the tax office.
Do we ever run into situations where they're less than a hundred percent incomparable?
Oh, yeah.
So, how would the court feel if you prorated it? If they're fifty percent, then fifty percent of the fee?
That's fine with me. Personally, I don't think veterans are to pay any fees, but we have a lot of veterans, so we'd be doing, you know...
Right.
Y'all would be doing a lot of work for nothing, so...
I know one thing, Dale Scher is being quiet. He's on the committee. What's your thoughts?
Sitting back and, and learning. My thought is, uh, sort of country, I've never seen a fee that I had to pay that I liked. And, um, I think that, uh, the court's wisdom is, uh, is good that you, we don't create a fee, unless we've got something to back it up as far as what it costs. I agree with Commissioner Kirk and Doc, on, on the benefits of being in Harden County is that we are, uh, some call it country. I call it less governed and less regulated, and it's where people want to live, and, and that's one of those reasons. The fact that we do pay a county tax and, and everybody does, I think, I, I'm glad to see everybody take that into consideration. The, uh, and I've never been one, uh, to say, well, somebody else does it, so let's do it. So, I always try to be cautious about that. The, uh, I'm a fire marshal for the, uh, U S D, uh, one, and, uh, some discussions have about fires and such as that. The, uh, we've not seen, uh, a problem with, with those things in the area for residences. Now, you're, you're going to get that where a fellow doing, is doing his own work in a barn or something like that. You could have some, some substantive work, but I don't know how that you can regulate to prevent all of that. The, uh, I would just be, it, it concerns me with, uh, portable building fee, uh, the, the things that are smaller size that we not give the fees to where they're, they're prohibitive, because we don't ever want to give them that appearance. But we also have to recover the county's cost. I mean, we all know that it costs money to operate the floodplain office, and so, I'm trying to, to weigh that back and forth, so... I don't know, I just, I mean, I don't have a, a firm opinion on it, but I do, my, my, I want to be the heir on the side of being conservative on, on the fees.
One thing I'd like to point out is if they're not going to live in it, they don't have to have a permit for it, unless it's in a flood zone. Uh, if it's a portable building and someone's putting it on their land for a garage or whatever, we don't charge, uh, for barns or anything like that. That's going to be coming up later on in the discussion on this, but as to what the committee might want to do, how, how, how far do we want to go with this?
Well, let, let me ask you this. Do you feel like that in the, in this hearing, that we've given you enough information that the committee could take it and then kind of bite this off and bite size and then come back and propose to the court?
Sure, I think we have competent committee members that, you know, Amanda and I deal with it every day. Uh, we brought Dale in because he does have an opinion. He's a, he's a developer in the county and, uh, has other things going on in the county. And then, we have two commissioners that have the highest growth area in the county, so... Now, I'd like to point out...
As far as the first page here, on your recommendations for fee changes, taking into consideration what, what we've discussed, the, uh, manufactured home placement permit fee, seventy-five to a hundred, everybody agree on that? I, I don't have a problem with it.
You know, I, I would say right now, I'm non-committal on anything, just because of the negative feedback I'm getting on the appraisals going up and the tax rate that's going up, Sealsby passing the school bond. So, for me, it's not, it's not the right environment to up any fee. Now, I understand we need to, and so, today, I, I would be non-committal just because I would need time to think on it, because I do know it's a, it's a bad atmosphere.
I would like to point out too, uh, because Dale reminded me of it when he was talking, the fees we collect in no way cover what it costs to run that office, what FEMA requires us to do and all the paperwork that we have to fill out for the Department of Commerce and then keep tracking of, of what, what homes. And so, we're not even, it doesn't even cover half of it, so...
Uh, Commissioner Kirk and Doc, your recommendation would be for the committee to take from here on what we've discussed and come back and make a recommendation to the court?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any input?
For some of the media, I'm just listening, but, uh...
I would move we send it to the committee.
I would like to make this comment. It's probably regrettable that we've let them go that many years without making adjustments, because some of these adjustments are going to seem pretty stark to the public. And we're in a year, when as Chris has pointed out, I'm getting a lot of feedback. I mean, some of these property values have jumped tremendously high. Also, we're looking at this annex and probably going to be going to the voters for a bond issue, I would probably think. And I would hate to see us jump out there and make them too mad ahead of time. And I know Daniel will not put any headlines in our Harden County increases fee, two hundred percent or something like that.
Right. Well, some of these fees on here, we don't even charge for. They were just put out for consideration.
I think we're already dealing with it, frustrating the public on these property value increases. In fact, a lot of them are saying, you know, y'all going to be lowering taxes to, uh, take up for this. Well, I'm not making any promises about my position on lowering taxes. I'm always against raising them, but I think we're going to get a lot of bottles floating in the air this year that, and, uh, and it's very important, I think, that we get this annex built.
See, with caution.
And then, a couple of things. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just another, um, example of an unfunded mandate, that they require us to have the office and don't fund it. I think that's important for the public to know. And then, can we work in maybe an every-two-year cycle to review this? Because every two years, you know, there's a potential of a new court, or if we're continuing and in that way, we, we missed a, you know, it won't be six years. We will at least review it every two years maybe, as if when the committee meets, if y'all would talk about that. As when the committee meets, if y'all would talk about that.
Well, there's some things on here that I really would like for us to look at today, unless y'all want to wait and let the committee do it, or do we want to discuss it? Because some things that we're pressed with daily, and I've talked with the judge on it. Well, one, that y'all were all concerned about, the subdivision fees, right now, we charge five hundred dollars flat fee when they come in and apply for that. And then, you know, we have to hire fits and shipment to come out and, and look at that, and that's, and some of them, I've spent as much as eight, nine thousand dollars on one subdivision. I was looking at some of the other counties and they have a proposed fee, and I'm sure it in the proposed fee of three hundred dollars plus fifty dollars per lot, so if it's a small subdivision, the fees aren't gonna be that high. If it's a larger subdivision, it's gonna require more work from the fits and shipments, so we need, probably need to, you know, think about that, but the committee, if y'all want to let the committee do that. And then, on the, on the second page, I'm just gonna go down in pretty quick, a travel trailer placement fee, we don't charge for that now, we can leave that like it is. I have to drive all, where there's travel trailers, all the mobile home park or travel trailer parks that are in flood zones and check all their tags to make sure they're current and road ready. I have to check their tires, everything, and if they don't have it, then I go to the owner of the park and say, you need to make him go get his trailer tags, you know, current and check the air in his tires, because if, okay, you take, there's some down on Village Creek, if, if a flood comes, you know, it can come up pretty quick. They have to be able to pull those trailers out of there, and if the tires are flat on it, or they don't have any tires on it, then that's an issue. And that's the part of the floodplain is that we have to have those trailers road ready to move out of there. We don't do like Galveston County does, they make them, pull them out every six months, take them to a spot in the county and take a picture of it at a designated spot, send it in before they can get, they have to re-permit every six months.
You understand why you have to do that?
Cause they're like.
Cause FEMA paid a lot of money had on travel trailers back.
Yeah.
But they want, they, even though in our flood zones, they want those trailers out of there if the water comes up.
On the, on the subdivision fees, is there any way, and they may already be doing it, is there any way to pass that fee between the developer and the buyer?
That, I would think it's all-
When they sell those lots, they build these fees, you know, whatever it costs them to clear it and this and everything else, they pass it on to the buyer.
Yeah, all fees are already included, so.
Okay. I would assume that they're passing on the cost of the roads, so fees are minor.
Right, so, but, but what my question is, is like if we're paying fits and shipments, say eight thousand, and the, the consumer's paying five hundred, why are we, why aren't the developer and the buyer paying that eight, paying that eight grand instead of the county?
Well, we would have to establish a threshold that the county is gonna pick it up there, and then after that threshold, if they keep having issues and they have to keep coming back out, we need to reach a threshold that y'all would decide, and then we would, anything over that.
I would recommend that to the committee to set a threshold of a thousand or fifteen hundred or whatever. Whatever y'all feels good, and then let it be between the buyer and the developer.
Well, actually, the fee structure is the subdivision where we're losing money, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
See, as much as can be paid by the developer and the, and the buyer, cause you know, the, the developer's one making out with the golden egg.
Right.
And, and so, and he's already passed on that cost to the consumer. And then we get in usually when something's going awry. And so, I, I would like to sit on the developer end, you know, you're probably looking at probably bothering him by one or two percent. I don't know that that's enough to break his bank, you know, we wouldn't want to do that for sure, but.
Wouldn't think if they were coming in here and spending the kind of money that they're spending, that that's gonna make a big difference.
Well, he's got deeper pockets than the county does, you know.
Yeah. And then another thing that we've been facing a lot, and we, and like I said, I've talked to the judge about it, and we just didn't, we haven't, we don't have anything in place is on commercial and industrial fees, oil, gas, pipeline, manufacturing, schools, retail. Like, we've had a great influx, and it's been wonderful, Dollar General and Family Dollars coming into the county, and we've just been charging them the development fee. So, do we want to, and the, the example you see down at the bottom is what Orange County, that's their fee structure for commercial and industrial. And it goes by the dollar value of the project, not by the square footage. This is a school, I'll just put this on here, this is a school district example of a school, a new school that's going in over there. Of course, we don't have any projects that large, so it would be smaller, but we need to establish something, like for BP, we've been visited recently, often with BP, they're coming in and putting in wells.
And working up in our precinct.
Right, and flood zones, and all the flood zone paperwork has to be done, they have to build flood zone specs. So, you know, that's, we need to establish a fee, like right now, we're just charging three fifty for that, that industrial, but do we want to change that? Where do we want to stand on that? I need to be able to separate out for the reports that I have to send in the difference in what's commercial and industrial and, you know, cause they asked for that, and I've just been attaching little notes that we don't do that right now, and so that they send it every month, want to know that figure.
In my opinion, you know, the oil and gas and all that, I would be for the school, you know, a governmental agency, I would, I would feel uncomfortable with because the voters are already being hit with the bond, and then if we hit them on the backside with a fee.
You're talking about a fee, like this example here where if they're gonna build a school, twenty-four million dollar project, they'd pay twelve thousand dollars.
That's, that's one that, that's an exact, that's an actual permit from Orange County.
Do they permit schools?
Yes, sir. This, this is a permit they just issued, I got that for an example, to show you that.
I believe I take it off schools. Any government, I mean, we don't require city, permitting cities, do we?
I don't know what the city's accounts, what they charge for permit fees, like.
No, but I mean, if, if the city of Coons is going to build a, build something, I would, we wouldn't, they don't have to get a permit unless, do they?
No, 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 if it's all in, we just do the unincorporated areas.
I would be-
But we do have schools in unincorporated areas.
Yes.
I'd be wary on governmental, but I'd be open to suggestions on like non-governmental, you know, obviously BP.
So, if, if, what, okay, if you're doing a private school, if someone comes in, I'm just trying to clarify all this.
I would say any taxing entity, we shouldn't be worried about any permits.
Yeah.
We would waive those.
How, how would you regulate an oil and gas permit?
By the value of the pro, the
Project value?
Project.
They're getting a permit from the state.
Right, but they have to get one from every other county, they have to come in and get permits. And like BP is putting in in precinct two
Precinct two.
in a flood zone. And so, we just discussed doing a three hundred and fifty dollar fee for that, just a flat fee. But, you know, that's, that's up to the commissioners, I know we need the oil and gas revenue.
Yeah, I'd like a recurring fund and road, rich. About a hundred thousand a year.
Still figuring on that, the two hundred thousand dollar project would have a three hundred and fifty dollar fee under this proposed structure.
On oil and gas?
Well, if a developmental project, non-diluted, I, I would, you know, first we gotta look at what the goal is here and just create funds to fund the office or whatever, but I would recommend that we do a developmental fee on structures because they're, those are geared to square footage.
Yeah, we do those already.
But non-structured projects such as a capital investment, whatever, pipeline, whatever, we've done on the fee schedule, but quite honestly, a two hundred thousand dollar building would generate more in a per square footage fee probably than it would in this developmental thing we proposed, so. I can see a multiple, a double approach, one for structures and one for.
Well, if we did a, if we did an industrial fee like that, it would be all encompassing, we would not, unless it was in a flood zone, we would not permit each individual structures, it would just be one fee.
I would recommend calculating the fee based on structures and your development fee and then that structure downstate of a project and permit the rest of it at a dollar per dollar fee.
I like on oil and gas well. Calculating, you know, if you don't have a flat fee, calculation's gonna be very hard.
Well, they usually have an idea of what their, their project's costing. If it's above ground.
They have AFV estimate or something like that.
Right.
And a fee is not gonna be make or, make or break them. But to me, something like a-
They expect to pay the fees.
Huh?
They expect to pay the fees.
Yeah, something like a thousand dollar flat fee or something like that, because.
But that's, yeah, that's what y'all need to decide.
I mean, the revenue's coming off of the discoveries.
Right.
And we're not gonna furnish any service to them, are we?
Well, on the, if they're building in a flood zone, that all that has, I have to go out and make sure that everything, everything is operational has to be above.
If they're drilling in a flood zone, they've already gone through EPA and stuff, they don't depend on the counties to tell them anything about flood zones, I don't imagine.
Well, they have to know what levels they build to, they have to provide elevation certificates, and so far, they haven't come in with that. They, they get their environmental certificates done and things like that, that they want to know, they come in, want to know what they have to have to build in that flood zone, and the first thing, of course, they have to have is an elevation certificate.
You're talking about to move a drilling rig in and drill a well? They're gonna go in there and put down board match two feet below the
Anything mechanical.
leg that they throw around that thing to keep the water out.
Anything mechanical, all their, some of them just haul in rock. Anything mechanical has to be above the base flood elevation, one foot above the base flood elevation, the bottom of it, meters.
For a, for a oil and gas location?
Mm-hmm, all their tanks have to have barns built around them.
I can see the tanks, cause that's a permanent structure, but for the temporary drilling equipment, they're not gonna be able.
Well, no, not the temporary drilling equipment, but any equipment that's operational at that time, like if they bring in generators in case of power failures to do that, then all that has to be up, they can't be anything below the base flood elevation. Now, on this BP project that we're looking at now, they're placing their tanks out of the flood zone so they can, they have that safety factor, they're putting them outside.
I could see if you make a discovery, and you're gonna put tankage in there for all oil storage and collection and things like this, but on the drilling load, they may go in there and lay boards flat on the ground.
Right.
And they.
That'd be the same difference of having a travel trailer with a, with specs like a regular residence, I mean.
Yeah, now some of them put a, they'll, they'll come out there and they'll put in a office, a trailer office, and we don't charge on that, even, a lot of them will set them up on blocks.
A deep well, they may put in six trailer houses
Right.
on wheels.
Temporarily.
Yes, but you're saying it.
If they take them off, off the wheels and put them up on blocks.
Oh, they're not taking them off the wheels, they're only gonna be there for two or three months.
Some of them do, they'll come in and set them up permanently, they don't, they're bringing those big office buildings.
I'm not talking about permanent installation, I'm talking about.
No, I mean, temporarily, but they'll take them, they'll bring in the office buildings with the big air conditioners hanging off the ends of it, and they'll set them up on blocks. And then they'll come back later on and move them.
That's what we call dog houses.
Mm-hmm, that's.
But they're, they're gonna set them on twelve, twelve seals, they're gonna set them on whatever is accessible, but I don't think we need to get into all that worry.
Well, that's what I, I want some guidance on, cause we don't have any guidance on that.
A big headache for nothing, because you're gonna have a lot of these deep operations that, where they're strictly Wildcats, and they you know, got a probability of finishing percentage of making a well, but they don't want to go in there and build a four hundred thousand dollar location for a dry hole.
Well, that's what y'all need to decide if we want to do a flat fee or fee at all.
So, we, we need to get a flat fee out of them, but.
Cause right now, we don't have any guidance on it, there's not anything that the county's done, so we need to adopt something.
And it's not, it's not gonna upset them whether we put five hundred thousand or two thousand. And we should get whatever.
I think five hundred thousand would probably upset them.
Well.
They might go to what he's trying.
When you start calculating their investment, that they're gonna do a ten million dollar well that has a high percentage of being a dry hole.
Yeah.
You know, you start hitting fifty thousand dollars or something, but they're not gonna like that.
Well, the reason I'm asking for guidance on this from you guys is because we don't have that, and we don't want to discourage them from coming in here, cause we definitely want their business in Martin County.
Well, that's kind of what I think, all the gas minerals are falling fast and, you know. A pipeline, they, they know when they come in here, that's a utility. They know what their estimated cost and stuff that pipeline is.
We just need to be fair across the board with other companies that are coming in too. Other businesses that choose to come here.
Absolutely. I appreciate your concern and bringing it to our attention as well, thank you.
Well, just when people come in, and I don't have any set, anything set in stone, you know, to work with them on, then that's, that's another thing we need to make sure that we have everything in place.
I, I think the ones that really are critical to us are the subdivision fees and the cover fees that we need to, to think about. And the development fees, I have a hard time on the development fees that, you know, a thousand square foot's fifty dollars, but forty-three hundred square foot's eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. We're not gonna furnish much more to the four, forty-three hundred square foot home than we're gonna furnish to the.
It depends on where they're building, and if it's in a subdivision, and you know, there's, there's things that I do have to check, you know, but mostly the the flooding areas, not just the flood zone areas, but flooding areas are the ones that require some control.
Well, I'm saying, is it gonna cost us sixteen times as much to check out a forty-three hundred square foot house as it is a thousand square foot?
Sometimes a thousand square foot would cost us more because it takes some, they just want to sneak them in.
I think we need to do some bottom up
Yeah.
adjustments more so than, and maybe a little bit of top down so that.
Well, if you look at that, the schedule.
When Daniel writes his article, we raise some fees, but we lowered some fees.
If you look at that schedule, once it gets past
With this, it goes down.
Four thousand, it does start going down.
It's down.
With this other one, two hundred, that's gonna go down.
These rules and regulations to me are just like, you know, when Rose comes in saying we have to make changes to our policy based on the Affordable Care Act. You know, we've got the federal government that's now regulating how we handle our, and we have to do it.
Right, but we don't want to be like them.
No.
Definitely not.
Okay, look on page three.
I believe, I believe you give us a lot of direction for the committee.
Okay, do we want to go on through page three, cause it had some of the questions that.
Yep.
Okay, there's a adopting one hundred square foot building allowance without fees, and that's we've, I've talked to some people at FEMA, and they said even in the flood zones, that you can approve an installation of a one hundred square foot building, like a ten by ten storage building in a non-flood zone. They still have to have a permit, but they're able to do that and then but they don't have to get the no rise certificate, so I need to, if we, we need to look at changing that in our subdivision, in our floodplain regulations. If we decide to do that, I'd like for us to look at that. The second one is permitting nonprofits or emergency services facilities, we need to decide if we want to do that. Waiving fees for the veterans if we do that on a prorated schedule. Waiving or discounting fees for senior and at what age limit? Waiving electrical fees for major disasters, like if we have a tornado somewhere. I usually can issue over my phone permits to energy to get their lights back on, and I, we have a no fee process that in that, in that situation, if it's like fifty people out, you know, out in the west side of the county due to a tornado or something like that, or hurricane, I can turn, go on my phone and turn their, issue the permit to have their power connected. So, we need to look at something like that, we don't have anything in place on that. And then that House Bill twenty-eight thirty-three discussing that. And that's, that's the things that I get the most issues on, that we need to get something in place with the county or do a blanket.
My thoughts on the disabled veterans and the social security disabilities, it'd be prorated as well based on their percentage, you know, if you have a veteran that's thirty percent, then he gets a thirty percent waive. Same thing, social security, if they're to, to the proportion, they're disabled, to, to the proportion that we'll waive. That's just my thought.
Okay.
And then, I think probably on one of, one of my other thoughts too, cause I know the committee's gonna come up with this, is fees for seniors and what age limit, I think whatever age is social security, retirement, sixty-five, sixty-seven, then I think that's a good age. Or, when, when, when can they do it with the appraisal district, sixty-five?
Do not have fees, is it sixty, not have a tax increase?
That's where they lock in.
Yeah. Is it sixty-five?
Yeah, cause the social security retirement ages are, it's moving at the sixty-five, that's gonna be sixty-six percent.
Are we gonna do like, or would you recommend doing like the appraisal district only for homestead? Cause some of these seniors are pretty well off, like Mr. Wilford there, you know.
We charge him double.
Oh, he ain't there yet, is he?
He pays double.
I get, but brother, I'll give him a lot.
Yeah, I'd say, I would say that we match like appraisal districts so it doesn't become confusing, but yeah, and then and then, yeah, homestead.
On the nonprofits and emergency service facilities, I again think any taxing entity, we just waive any permit fees. And then on a nonprofit, I guess if it was a five oh, five oh one C three organization like the Lions Club or somebody like that, I think we should include them as well.
Churches.
Yeah.
Churches, yes ma'am.
Right.
I think we should, what do you think?
Don't want to touch churches.
That's right.
Well, we haven't been charging them, we permit them, but we don't charge them a fee.
But we need to put it in right.
We just need to get it all in.
Well, don't, don't have us doing a Jericho march around the courthouse.
This is y'all's decision, not mine, I'm just, I'm just a messenger, y'all get to make the decisions.
March seven times and shout. March seven times and shout.
When, when do you want, committee meeting?
Whenever y'all want to schedule it.
To date, ma'am.
Your convenience. You three guys get together, Amanda and I are gonna be here every day, so.
Can we schedule it right after a budget workshop or something?
That sounds good, ma'am.
I was hoping we could get something done by October one, so we could go into the new year with-
October one, oh, I think.
We have a, uh, on June the second, a nine AM workshop. I mean, a budget workshop.
And it's, it's pretty small too, well, justice and conscience.
For now, it is. Y'all want to do something that day?
Let's see, who's on the committee?
Me and you, Dale. Dale?
Dale, Amanda, myself.
We're gonna be there for the budget workshop, so just, now, the nineteenth, we've got, uh, these, uh, GLO meetings.
Yes, sir, and after that is when we have the first workshop.
Yeah. Any other time, well, we could, if you meet that morning, then that-
Y'all could meet after the commissioner's court meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
And before the budget workshop, or after the budget workshop on the first.
True.
Would you rather meet in, before the, before the commissioner's court or after the budget workshop?
On the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Before?
Nine o'clock, eight o'clock?
Seven thirty.
May the twenty-sixth.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Um, in May?
Yeah, this, next, twenty-sixth.
Nine o'clock.
Seven thirty. On the twenty-sixth is a Tuesday. Right, that's right after tomorrow.
I'm good.
Can I move further?
I'm moving to the jury.
Second.
Just add a jury.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right. She's hanging out, yesterday was her best day too.
Oh, yeah.
So, we brought her in that night, they put her on the floor. It, it wasn't the best.
Yeah.
And then she's been, she had to go back.
And to be a comedian, you got a workshop.
Which I had to put in.
And to be a comedian, you got a workshop.
So, she's in ICU. And our understanding, a couple more days, they'll, uh, she'll be in ICU. I don't know if they're gonna release her for a room or-
A lot of balls married.
I agree.
Priests or persons.
Yes, yes, sir, definitely.
One thing history's got coming up, those people come in to try to play a game.
How about, uh, how about your husband?
Yeah. He's staying in ICU.
For a few days and, and they put him out on the floor.
Do you have a folder for yours? Oh, that, that would just get you. Here's one right here.
I don't know, he's not been able to do too much, yet, but he can.
I understand that.
Just kinda back and forth, you know.
Well, I'll certainly pray for him too.
Thank you, I will, your mother as well.
Thank you. Ken?
Mm-hmm.
Enjoy your-